I do believe we have quorum. So it is 7:30 on the dot.
Kimberly Clark from the public.
Hi, thank you. Um, so why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order? It is 7:30 AM. And oh, I don't see, is Clayton not on yet?
I heard him come in, so I'm sure he's logging in.
Okay, we will give it just another minute.
I'll go refill my coffee then, too.
That's a great idea. I planned my whole morning around refilling my coffee just before this meeting. And I'm not joking.
Good morning, everybody.
There you are. Clayton, good morning.
Sorry for being late.
Well, one whole minute doesn't really count, I don't think.
It does.
Um, so we are getting started, um, trying, um, to see if there's any adjustments to the agenda. Anybody have any? No? I don't either. So we will move forward to public comment. And Kim, I know you said you were here. Do you have a comment that you?
Yes, I do. I recommend to the board John would be general manager again, and he would do a much better job for GMT. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public present? Hey, Kim, I'm wondering if you could just put your, um, yourself on mute while we're.
How do you do that, Amy? I don't know how you do that.
Oh, let me see if I can.
I can do it.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Jamie's gonna help. I appreciate it. Okay, um, so, uh, moving on to the consent agenda in there, we have the check register and the July 21st. July 21st board meeting minutes?
Oh, sorry. Should be the August, uh.
August.
Uh, your 19th.
There we go.
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda with that correction.
Thanks, Catherine.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Um, moving right along, um, to the capital budget adjustment. Um, unless Clayton's gonna kick it off, I'll send it right to Matt.
I think we can go right to Matt, but I'm not.
Is Matt here?
I'm not seeing him.
I am not either.
Okay, I know he's supposed to, he's planning to be here today, so I'm not sure if he's just temporarily delayed. That is.
You want me to walk through that, or?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. Oh, here he comes.
It's just that I'm extra speedy this morning because it is my second cup of coffee, so you're all slightly behind where I'm going.
And, uh, welcome, Matt, and we're all ready for you to do your presentation. Early stay. So Matt, I don't know if you can hear us, but, uh, uh, we're at the agenda item for you to do our capital, uh, uh, budget adjustment.
Sorry about that. I was, uh, turning on my speakers and the power was off as you were speaking. Okay, so, um, there was a, there's, um, a memo in the board packet for the capital budget adjustment. I will quickly share my screen. This should be a, uh, very quick adjustment. Uh, just the one on the rural capital budget. Hopefully you can all see my screen. Uh, so we receive, we originally planned to purchase, uh, two non-CDL cutaways, uh, with all local funds. These were originally produced for, uh, Green Mountain Community Network down in Bennington, uh, but were made available to other, uh, transit providers. And we jumped on that opportunity. And, uh, in one of the, in the last mid-year amendment, uh, to the FY25 state grant, B-Trans provided $270,208 in federal funds to GMT for those cutaways. Uh, but that had not been, uh, programmed into the capital budget. So this adjustment is to add those federal funds into the capital budget and reduce the local match, um, in the overall capital budget, which was programmed from the prior year, uh, local capital match fund. So that number is reduced by 270,208. So this brings the capital budget, uh, to the actual figures, uh, for FY25, uh, with that change. Uh, this change was presented to the finance committee last week, who voted to endorse it to the, uh, Board of Commissioners for adoption. So we are now presenting this to the full board, uh, for adoption. I'd welcome any questions, um, on the adjustment.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Matt?
I would, I would move, uh, Amy, that, that the board adopt the, the adjustment to the capital budget.
I'll second that, Amy.
Thanks, Susan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those, anybody opposed? Barbs standing? All right, the adjustment has been approved. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Um, moving along, um, as we've continued to discuss our ADA fair, um, uh, changes. Uh, we, looks like we get to consider authorizing public meetings for the change in ADA fair free. And I'm gonna let Chris kind of fill in the blanks there.
Good morning, everyone. Um, so as Clayton put in his read ahead, um, and as the board knows, you all approved the changes that have already gone into effect to the number 11 routing, um, at the beginning of the summer, the board also approved, uh, the fair change to remove the fair free portion of the number 11 route. Um, in that, uh, we omitted the piece for the ADA fair, and so per our policy, we wanted to make sure that we're covering all our bases and doing, um, all the public meetings that are required for everything. So this, uh, motion today is to request the board to authorize us to go to public meetings for, uh, instituting the ADA fairs on the former fair free portion of the number 11 for any ADA rides that, um, fall within that three-quarter mile zone, um, of, of College Street essentially in Brawlington. Uh, one, oh, one other piece that I forgot to mention, uh, so we'll be going to, we'll be having our public meeting, uh, probably around the beginning of October, um, with board approval, uh, probably at the October 21st, uh, board meeting.
And I think that then looking at, um, implementation, uh, I think we're targeting a December 1st, uh, implementation for having, uh, fairs return.
Anyway, go ahead, Chayton.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, what is the ability given, I, we have, uh, a good sense of our ADA riders in this area. What's our communication plan to make sure people are aware of the transition if, uh, the board does approve it?
Yeah, so we've already been working with SSTI on sort of, you know, they're the ones working directly with these riders. And so we'll also make sure that these notices also go, uh, to SSTI for them to notify their riders as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
And, uh, similarly to, um, uh, the previous board actions, um, which required, I believe, 30 days notice. We'll follow that, uh, and making sure that everybody has at least that amount of, uh, of notice.
Anybody else? I'm just gonna scroll through the. Okay. Seeing none. Does somebody want to make the motion to authorize?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that, Amy.
Thank you, Chayton and Susan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. Thank you for going out to the public and listening to their thoughts and feelings. Um, moving quickly along, um, we are up to an update on FY27 financial projections. Nick, this is you.
Me. Um, good morning. Uh, I did provide a memo, went out a little later than I would have hoped, uh, yesterday, but I'll kind of consolidate that, um, in my remarks today, and, um, we can pull it up after, and I'm happy to dig into the details. Uh, but essentially, um, things have changed pretty dramatically from what we provided in our initial, you know, budget projections about a year ago. Um, FY25, our operating results came in, um, stronger than expected, uh, lower spending on wages, benefits, and maintenance. Uh, Matt, we underspent our federal 5307 funds by around $1.2 million. Um, B-Trans also gave us about $480,000 in capital grants, uh, which, uh, it was rather unexpected how much of an impact that would have on the overall, um, operating results of FY25. But because of that additional funding that B-Trans gave us, it helped us keep our maintenance-related operating costs, uh, at about 84% of budget. Um, so that combined with the underspending that came from service reductions, as well as much higher staff attrition, especially in the drivers pool, um, ended up, uh, having our operating budget closing the year out at about 94% of budget. Um, this resulted in us, like I said, retaining a high, higher level of our 5307 funds than we originally expected. Um, and this will help us in FY26 and FY27. Um, some of these benefits are one-time in nature, so I just want to keep that in mind, um, as we move through the rest of, of the fiscal years. But FY26, when we presented the original budget, we were looking at about a $1.1 million deficit. Um, the improvements, uh, that have come because of these one-time funds that we're able to carry forward, um, have really brought that down to what we're seeing now as a balanced budget in FY26. Um, like I said, the carryover of the 5307 funds from the underspending in FY25 helped, uh, as long, as well as we got about $900,000 of additional funding from B-Trans in FY26. So that's the other big part of the puzzle here. So they gave us $700,000 in carbon reduction funds, as well as an additional $200,000 over what we originally expected in state operating funds. Um, the other final piece of the puzzle is obviously all the service reductions that we've done. Those were not in the original projections that we had. Um, so we have lowered wages by about $800,000, uh, from the original budget that we brought to you folks. And that combined with the additional funding for B-Trans and both the carryover 5307 funds is really the reason that the budget now for FY26 is projected to be balanced. Um, whereas, like I said, the original approved budget that we brought to you, um, last February had about a $1.1 million hole. So operating expenses now are expected to be down in FY26 about 5% to 6% from the original approved budget. And, um, like I said, that's, that's really what's helping balance the budget in 26. Also, I want to point out that our FY26 funds, uh, our COVID funds, uh, are programmed to be spent all in FY26. So that's another important point as we move forward past that fiscal year into the future fiscal years. Um, originally FY27 was expected to run a deficit of about $2.8 to $3 million. Um, really, because of all the updated projections now, uh, we show a reduced deficit of about $600,000 to $800,000. Um, and that figure does not assume that we are able to carry forward any of the extra revenue that B-Trans promised us in FY26. So if we are able to get another year of, you know, additional, uh, carbon reduction funds for B-Trans and, you know, the two, extra 200,000 that we got for state operating, we, we do believe that we can balance the 27 budget as well, which is, you know, that's a big change from the original 2.8 to $3 million hole. Um, the, the bad news is kind of as I move out past 27 and, and we go into 28. And, and as I said in my initial remarks, you know, some of these, you know, like the carryforward funds are, are one-time benefits, meaning that this isn't gonna help us in perpetuity. It really just allows us to overspend what the initial amount of funds that are coming in any given year in one year. So, um, by 28, really, the one-time benefits we've been relying on for, you know, since the pandemic, um, are particularly the 5307 reserves are gonna be fully exhausted. And that's why FY28's outlook is not as rosy. And, and really, we, we haven't done anything except, you know, push the fiscal cliff off another year, essentially, is, is what I'm trying to say. Um, because at that point, FY28 will be relying on solely our just standard federal portion. Man, we won't have any extra reserve funds that we can use to fill the budget gap. Um, and so we are projecting a deficit of around $2.7 to $3 million, um, which is, you know, obviously the fiscal cliff, we've been anticipating, we just thought we were gonna hit it in 27, now it's getting kicked off to 28. Um, so, but, you know, the recent actions that, that the board has done and management has done in terms of updating the, the service level has really, is definitely part of, of the reason our projections have changed as well. Um, so really, to summarize everything, we, we, you know, we've certainly made meaningful progress in managing the near-term deficits, you know, through cost control, service adjustments, and our partnership with B-Trans. But, you know, these improvements don't solve our long-term structural gap that we have. Um, so, you know, I look forward, I know staff looks forward to continuing the discussion on, you know, sustainable funding strategies and, and how we, you know, secure a, a stable funding model, you know, as we move into future fiscal years. So I hope that summarizes that the, the memo had a lot of figures and, and detailing it. So, you know, I think that's really the, the consolidated summary of it. Um, there are some exhibits in there that kind of just show the, the grants that I'm budgeting in each fiscal year. So you can kind of see it for yourself, as well as I included a glide path on our 5307 funds, which, you know, also show, you know, how we're, we're able to spend more than we take in. And so I'm happy to pull all that up and, and walk you through that as well. Um, but, um, but I think, you know, uh, uh, what I, what I've said kind of summarizes all of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll just end with, uh, you know, these are, these are projections and are subject to change, so.
Thanks for that, Nick. Um, and I'll share that we discussed this at leadership, um, not very in-depth, um, but one, um, we're grateful that, um, the hard choices that we've been making this year gave us some of the space that we had been looking, um, for, uh, some of the space to discuss this. And we also, um, for savings, um, and discussed how, um, hard it has been on people who have lost service. Uh, so although we've given ourselves time and savings, it is not without its impact to our community and our, um, our organization. And not general agreement at this moment on going forward, so I'm interested to hear, um, others' perspectives. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, just to comment that, uh, I think these results are the, of the good work done by board and staff, uh, the last couple of years. Um, we still have some hard work ahead, but it seems though we might be able to take a breath, uh, during, during FY26, uh, which doesn't mean we don't look for new sources of finance, but we may not have to make the hard decisions we've been making for a while. So I hope that's the case.
Thank you. Susan?
Uh, yeah, I have just two, um, clarifying questions here. So are, do the fiscal year '27 and, and '28 projections assume that we're providing both urban and rural service?
Yes, yes, they do. And, and that is one, um, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, Susan. That's, you know, as I get '27's budget done and the '26 budget adjustment done, my next step is working on a, a budget that does not include rural, so we can see what the cost impacts are. But if I would have to bet, they're gonna be fairly significant, you know, anywhere between maybe $700,000 to a million. Um, so that's not factored into my projections, and, and that's why, you know, although '27 now shows a much lower deficit than what we anticipated, if the rural transfer goes through in that fiscal year, you know, it's gonna be a much, the deficit's probably gonna be widened by another 100%. So, um, you know, that's something we need to keep in mind. Uh, it is gonna cause some additional pain, for sure.
And if I can just, uh, add in quickly, I think that the other thing that it may impact is the mix. And so we may, for example, uh, need to look at the amount of, uh, local match that we're generating. And so we'll be taking that into consideration as well.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying that. Um, the other question I had is just, I'm wondering if you can just give us a sense of, you know, the status of the carbon reduction fund, that program?
So I, uh, we are definitely getting the carbon reduction funds in '26. Um, they're, my understanding, we've had many meetings with the FCA and B-Trans about this, is they essentially are gonna be treated like, um, 5307 funds and can be used for operations and, 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 and the nice thing is they actually only require a 20% match, which, which is nice. Um, however, although Ross and Dan have said, you know, you were, were very confident that we can provide those funds to you in FY27, I had not put those in my projections yet, um, just because, you know, I, I would rather be conservative. I don't want to come to you folks and say I've got a balanced budget when I don't have a grand award with that money in it. Um, so, uh, appreciate B-Trans, um, saying that, you know, we're, we're very confident we can get you another year of those funds. They don't believe, they're not as confident in FY28, so they're, you know, I haven't put the revenues in that year, uh, as well. Um, but, uh, we're hoping that becomes a sustainable source of funds, uh, but, you know, all I can say for right now is we're definitely getting it '26.
Okay, thanks, Nick. And, uh, this overview was really helpful, so I really appreciate that.
And do we want to give Dan a, a moment to, to chime in? Um, regarding the carbon funds?
Happy to, Clayton, or I can wait for all the questions and then speak at the end. Your call.
Well, we'll, uh, why don't you speak at the end then, since we have some other questions?
Right. Alona, you're up, and then Tasha.
Alright, um, thanks. Uh, so I was curious if the projections, if you're including the link, any additional revenues from the link yet in projections, and if that would even have a noticeable impact. Thanks.
So essentially, uh, yes, the link is included. Um, it's right, basically right now, the service level that we are providing right now is what is included in the projections. Um, I assume you're talking about fairs when you say the increased revenue from, you know, the state workers having to go back. Um, that's not included in my projections, uh, so, but we'll have to do some work on that, see if it's material enough to, to up our fair estimate, so, yeah.
Alright. Go ahead, Tasha.
Thank you, Amy, and, and, and thanks for, it's nice to see that we've got some breathing room in the, oops, did I lose you guys?
Nope, we can hear you.
Okay, my computer's challenging. Um, I just, I had a question, and I can't remember, um, what we call the, uh, somewhat like overhead costs, and I was just wondering, uh, you know, we've always struggled to have a, like, a, you know, enough funding for a core of, um, you know, central office professionals. And with rural spinning off, does that make it harder to do that with the change in ratio between, um, admin staff and, um, drivers, et cetera?
So the, the impact, uh, to the urban side, really the, well, so rural going to the different agencies, um, hard to tell how that's gonna impact their overhead or indirect rate. It should improve it, to be honest with you, because they're gaining scale by taking over greater service. Um, by us retracting, um, that is gonna likely have a upward pressure on the urban's indirect rate. So the rate that we use to essentially allocate our overhead. Um, the bigger issue is that we are losing that scale. And now we've got, whereas we were able to spread our overhead costs over a greater amount of service, um, that shrinks. And so that's where the cost impacts, you know, hit, um, hardest for us. So, for example, uh, you know, I think about 10% of my salary is covered by mobility management, uh, grants. So, you know, that grant will go away, and, and essentially now the urban side will have to absorb, you know, additional 10% of my salary benefits in that. And I'm just one example. There's, there's many administrative staff that, you know, allocates their, their salary between urban and rural. Uh, and that's where the pain is really gonna come, also in some other cost allocations that, you know, we make, uh, the maintenance staff and, um, you know, for the link and, and things of that nature. So I need to, uh, once I get some more time and, and get through budget season, that's, that's gonna be my next main of, uh, focus is to really drill down and, and see how much of an impact this is gonna have, uh, for, for both divisions, really.
Thank you.
Great. Catherine, you're up, please.
Tasha, thanks for bringing that up, because that's an ongoing concern of mine as well. And I'm wondering if when Dan speaks, he could talk to, um, B-Trans discussions about helping GMT through that transition period so that it's not a big hit to our administrative budget and our administrative staff.
Alright, I think that's the perfect place, Dan, for you to chime in.
Thanks, Amy. And so I'd like, I'll just start on that. Thank you, Catherine. Um, so B-Trans is very interested in seeing that urban version of the budgets, because we do recognize that there will be this, this additional cost, uh, at the urban staff level. Um, and so we don't have, um, answers yet, but we do want to help with those costs. Um, we also want to have, you know, the board, you know, and, and staff talk about like what an urban operations would look like without a rural service, right? Is there a change in the mix of admin? Is there a change in the mix of supervisors? Now, like, what does that look like? And I hope that's also being considered, uh, because B-Trans is also asking for that. Um, and so, um, we will, um, wait for Nick, um, and then, um, and then, you know, assist accordingly. Uh, we do plan, and Ross is presenting, um, the budget, you know, um, to our leadership, um, team. You know, we do plan on the 2.2 million, um, you know, in GMT's state budget, um, for their grant in '27. So that is, you know, $200,000 that, um, that Ross is advocating for. We are being asked to also cut the amount of state money that we're actually asking for in our overall budget. I'm sure you have seen the news about a reduction in the forecast for the transportation fund. And so, so we, um, we stand at the ready to help GMT, um, and we are putting in the numbers in our budget that would help you in '27 have a balanced budget. We just don't have that final budget yet, because it's not been presented to the governor. He's not released it, uh, to the legislature. So we will, um, know in January what the final numbers look like, uh, for GMT. And then we'll move into the legislative session. It might be, you know, appropriate VPTA, B-Trans, Green Mountain Transit, all get together and talk about that legislative session and what the, uh, strategy might be, um, to talk about our funding gap, um, if there is one. So, because we're thinking it will, um, you know, we are pretty stable, um, at the federal level. Reduction state funding would mean some reductions in, um, in some of the match we can provide. So additional local match might need to be provided. And I know GMT might be at a local match, you know, as you project forward. And so, so that's just something to, um, to also consider. Overall, B-Trans is very pleased with the results of everything you're doing, right? You know, we are happy to meet you all the way or halfway, depending on how much your budget gap is. That's our commitment. And we do expect the savings on the rural side when the rural transfer happens, right? So that we do have additional CMAC funding. We do have a. So that we do have additional C Mac funding, we do have additional fifty three eleven funding, items that we can send over to GMT Urban to assist them in their operations. And, um, on the carbon reduction side, you're right, those money, uh, those, they will eventually be fully expended. I doubt we'll have any money to send you in twenty eight, but we are advocating for it in twenty seven. And so far, it's been a positive reaction to that request. It's not a deficit. So, lot of, love to, to be determined.
Thanks, Dan. There's a lot in all the, the stuff that you just said, so I appreciate that. Additional thoughts, questions?
If I could take a moment, Amy?
Please do.
Um, going back to our twenty twenty three organizational assessment, uh, one of the things that we saw was that, uh, we were staffed, uh, just about right, uh, when, when it came to running a small urban, uh, network like ourselves. And so aspirationally, it's my goal to get through this process without seeing, uh, reduction in administrative staff. Because I, I think that what we don't want to do is be a large entity that didn't have enough staff to operate fun, uh, as well as we'd like, and becoming a smaller organization that doesn't have as much staff to function the way we like. So, so certainly my perspective will be trying to get through, uh, this process with, without a downsize and, and, uh, and administrative folks.
Thank you for adding that. I was going to do just the same, very cautious of, of our admin burden. Uh, Chapin.
Great, thanks. Um, this last conversation has been really helpful in seeing, yes, we have a delay in, uh, the fiscal cliff, but we still have a financial unsustainable business model. And, uh, I understand the legislature to enact change takes time and building relationships. And I appreciated Dan's comments just now about facilitating a VPTA, GMT, V Trans discussion. Um, can, um, Clayton, in terms of timeline with this being September and legislative session coming up, sounds like Dan, you know, is interested in seeing the, the budget for FY twenty eight urban only. And, you know, I think that's going to probably play into how urgent this is to really bring forward a solution to this structural financial disconnect. And I'm wondering what the timeline is for having the urban only budget and how we can, you know, make sure that fits in, uh, so that we can hopefully get a united platform with V Trans. I'm curious also from Dan, if there really is a reduction of state funds, that's a pressure not only on your public transit program, but on your agency overall? And whether there's a solution you're going to be advancing that GMT could partner on and, uh, also help a larger financial solution? Thanks.
Chapin, and, and responding to when we may see, uh, urban only financials, I'm going to have to be deferential to Nick here, um, knowing that we have to get our assessments out and the first focus will be the fiscal year twenty seven. And so, Nick, do we have a, a, a best guess of when we will be able to see urban only, um, uh, budgets for twenty seven forward?
I mean, uh, I was, uh, hoping to, uh, do it, you know, maybe after the audit, um, or the budget. I, I mean, you tell me when you absolutely need it by, and I'll, you know, get it done. I was hoping maybe like February, um, but, uh, March, uh, that, that might be helpful. But if I can't wait that long, then, um, you know, I can, we can fast track it.
I, I suspect we'll need to fast track it, but I'll give you more guidance than that, uh, um, in the near future.
Alright.
Thanks. And then maybe if I may, that second part of the question to Dan, trying to understand whether V Trans has a larger kind of legislative agenda that transit funding could, uh, be paired with?
One has not been shared with me yet, Chapin. It's a great question. And I'll bring that forward to Michelle and see if we do. Um, she's in the right position to know that answer. And I'll follow up, um, with an email to you and, and Clayton and Amy on the board, if you like.
Thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
We have plenty of time for discussions and I don't want to leave this too early. I think, um, in the discussion at leadership about was, you know, how do we move forward? Um, because some of this is one-time funding. Um, we are still going to end up, uh, with a deficit perhaps, right? It's a little hard to project three years out. But, you know, do we continue making hard choices now? Uh, I'm posing the questions. I'm not advocating. Do we, do we continue to make hard choices now? Um, and, um, change, uh, routes or how we do things um, to avoid that fiscal cliff, um, that we know is coming because our structure isn't, um, quite right for, um, our budget? Or, um, do we take a pause, um, and, uh, slow down and go through this a little bit more, um, intentionally? Wait for some of the big changes that we're going through to settle? Um, and I'm curious if anybody has any thoughts or opinions. There were, there was definitely a difference of opinions in our leadership committee, um, about next steps. Go ahead, Alana.
I just had a question, although I did have an opinion, but I had a question about, um, what, I'm just unclear about whether it's twenty seven or twenty eight where the impact, like, when is, when, I know it's still under negotiation, but what is the projection for the budget where there will not be rural service provided by GMT theoretically?
Fiscal year twenty seven, um, if the transfer goes through on time, uh, will be urban only.
So we're budgeting right now, I know, at the municipal level. Like, we're already putting together our budgets for twenty seven.
Yes.
Yeah. So, that, having that information, I know for us earlier is, is better.
Yep. I don't see a, um, I mean, the, we will still have the existing assessment methodology and, uh, you know, for twenty seven. And so, um, you know, what I don't see is, is a wide scale change. We are going through an assessment reform process that I do think will, um, significantly change how we, we do our assessments. But I don't, uh, imagine that happening until fiscal year twenty eight, uh, at the earliest.
Okay. Um, but I, I feel like the legislature, they might benefit from earlier conversations too. Yeah. I, I feel like there's an opportunity. I, I feel like I'm, I'm very grateful that there is some time to work through these questions, Amy. But I do feel like we have to be looking for those structural solutions now and not see how the financing plays out, if that makes sense. I, I think it gives us some flexibility on implementation and testing.
Great. I hear you. Austin, um, I saw you pop on. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's exactly what I, the last comment is exactly, I was getting that in leadership committee. Um, you know, I have concerns, looking back on like this agency's history and how we continually postponed ending fare free because we were, um, you know, we were given breathing room repeatedly. And, you know, during that time, I advocated often that we should kind of just move to ending fare free sooner because we knew we were facing a cliff in the future. And every little bit of breathing room we had was really just pushing the fiscal cliff out more. So I don't want to recreate that scenario where we push off harder decisions, um, you know, that we know we're going to eventually have to make just because we're given a little breathing room. Um, so I just have concerns about, um, I'm happy that we've done good work. Let's get those breathing room. I just, um, I have just concerns about us becoming too comfortable.
Thanks, both of you for that perspective. Go ahead, Christian.
Yeah, just directly to your question, Amy. I think I'd like to see a missing piece of information I feel like I don't have is the impacts of the, uh, shifting of rural services away from GMT, understanding what effect that'll have on the twenty twenty seven budget, twenty twenty eight. I think that could give us more clarity on how much action we need to take today versus can be, can be put off a little bit.
Thank you. Other thoughts or ideas? If you're a, a physical hand raiser and I've missed you waving at me, just come off mute and chime in. Okay. Um, points well taken. Um, I, you know, I want to add the perspective that, you know, right now, the thing that we have under most of our control, right, is our roots and all the impacts. Um, and, uh, as Clayton shared, and I think is true, is that we've really tightened those roots to some pretty effective roots, right? That are utilized, that are running, um, at least in the core, um, with some regularity and predictability. And any changes to those will likely have greater rider impact, um, and that ripples out. Um, those are, um, you know, people's opportunity to get to where they need to go or want to go. Um, so unlike kind of the easy low-hanging fruit of the Jefferson commuter, which impacted people, um, but not a lot of people, changes to the existing roots will impact a lot more people. Um, and so I just want to, as we're considering what, um, changes to address the structural, you know, um, challenges we have, um, roots are no longer an easy, and they weren't easy to begin with. Um, they're not, uh, an, an easy solution. Um, so it just gets more complicated. So I'm, I also want to see a little bit of the dust settle with rural. Um, and as we'll talk about in the next two bits and pieces, those transfers are not cut and dry, and they're moving fast and slow. And there's changes of, of who owns the buses and who gets what buses. And, and I think it, there's a lot of unknowns there that might, um, impact some of this. So. Any final words? Clayton, do you have any final words?
Oh, I think.
Not final. I mean, we'll keep discussing this, but for today.
I think that you sort of made a great transition to our next topic.
Okay. Alright, so we're going to leave this topic, knowing that the next two discussion items are very much related, um, to the future of what, what our budget will look like. And I'm going to move us along to an update. Um, nope, sorry, developing a rule on urban service prioritization and an updated roadmap.
Yeah. And so, um, um, I really am appreciative of the discussion that we're having because I think that you all are getting very clearly the, the balancing act that we're in. Um, absolutely, if we were to declare victory right now and say we don't need to do any, uh, more reductions, uh, you know, about twelve months from now, we would have a problem and, uh, have a lot of lost credibility. Um, similarly, if, if we still go forward aggressively with, um, service reductions, I think that we'll lose a lot of the advocates, um, that, uh, are championing for more service, um, asking why we're, you know, reducing service when we have projections for a, uh, for a balanced budget. And so one of the things that, uh, I'm appreciative of is, is the breathing room that we heard Paul say. Because what it's going to allow us to do is, um, is change, uh, plans a little bit from the roadmap that I presented at the last meeting. Um, last year, uh, we, when we started this process, um, we had surveyed the board. That survey was to get, uh, sort of the values that, uh, board members had as far as, um, their service and how, um, they would like those values to be used by staff in considering service reductions. We were considering doing a similar survey process, uh, for this year. But having that breathing room, I think will allow us to do what we've heard board members have wanted us to do, but we really haven't had the time, um, which is to come up with more of a, a bigger picture strategic vision of our, uh, prioritization. And so my recommendation is that, um, since we have this time, um, but we know that we still need to act, um, that we, uh, develop a rule on service prioritization. Um, we then, um, go through a, a much more comprehensive process, um, and much more holistic and inclusive to include beyond the board, um, to, uh, to develop that. And then that way, uh, when we move, uh, forward, uh, we will have some more guiding principles, uh, for, uh, you know, for how we act. Um, Amy is absolutely right that the, um, that the service, uh, changes that we make, uh, moving forward will be impacting a lot more riders. Um, we saw this with the changes that came about on, uh, our August twenty fifth changes. Um, we received far more feedback, uh, both positive and negative, uh, on that change than any of our previous ones. And, and in kind of a interesting situation, on, on Wednesday, I will be at a ribbon cutting celebrating, uh, you know, the improvements of adding Market Street, uh, to the folks that live there in the morning. And then in the evening, I'll be in Burlington, um, getting, uh, um, the opposite perspective, uh, from folks, uh, who are disconcerned, are concerned with, uh, the changes to the eleven. And so, um, it, it certainly, I think that we can expect a lot more emotion, um, um, and a lot more, uh, direct feedback from folks, uh, with the changes that we, um, that we've made moving forward. So one of the things that, um, I was going to recommend is that, um, that we, you know, use the new rule process, uh, that was established last year, uh, with our governance, um, uh, rule that allowed the, the board to, uh, to establish them. Um, that we would use the leadership committee, um, sort of as the guiding, uh, group to help form that, um, uh, that, um, rule. But that they would sort of be in a much more of an overseer type role and that we would then, um, create, um, sort of working groups, uh, that would gather a wide net. And what I'm thinking about with these, uh, working groups, I'm thinking that certainly gathering feedback from employees. Um, I think gathering feedback from the new committees that, uh, Jamie is working to establish on our, um, rider feedback group. Uh, folks may recall the authorization to create, uh, both rider and provider feedback groups, uh, this summer. Um, so this would be a great task for these, um, you know, newly formed, uh, groups. Um, also, um, getting input from our major partners. And, uh, whether that's, say, hearing from, uh, UVM and the Medical Center Directorly or using Catma as their, you know, representative. Um, I think, um, going through that, you know, uh, process will help us get a product, um, that we can then use, um, in the future when we have to make these tough decisions. The, uh, um, what I would, uh, and I'm just about to open it up for questions, Alana. Um, one of the things that I will be, um, asking for you all is, uh, whether you share this vision, um, whether you, uh, want to, um, be more, um, open, um, with having, um, folks outside of this, is this group come up with that rule? Or whether this is something that you all want to sort of take on internally? And, uh, so I'm here to get your feedback on that. And, um, um, and then I'm happy that today, it seems like so many of our, um, board meetings are, are like decision after decision with, hey, you've got five minutes to ponder this important thing. And, and so I was really excited that today's board meeting is, is, is not like that. And, and that, um, um, especially with us getting through our first action item so quickly that we have a bit of time. And so, so Alana, love to hear, um, your thoughts.
Sorry, I'm just confused. What rule are you talking about? And what process was this used for?
Okay, so earlier in the year, um, the board, um, established a rule on government, governance that allows the board to establish rules, um, instead of policies. And basically it just, um, sets up a framework for by which, um, the board does its policy work. And so what we would be creating would be a new rule, um, for service prioritization, um, that would, uh, basically establish, uh, the board's values for how it, how it measures service.
Clayton, you, you also talked about spending some time on a, um, more holistic, larger kind of vision and, and strategic plan. Is that a separate effort that would follow the development of this rule?
I think that it would, would be. This is something that we, um, had started working on this summer. And one of the things that we sort of realized quickly is that it was hard to work on a strategic plan. it was hard to work on a strategic plan when, you know, a third of our service was going away. And and it didn't seem like it would be right for us to be establishing rural strategic vision when that would be transferring to other partners. And we also didn't want to exclude our rural partners by, you know, having a process that would only focus on, you know, developing a strategic plan for urban. So I do think that that would be the case. One of the things I do want to let folks know is that I do not envision a strategic plan the way we have previously done strategic plans at GMT. I think that the strategic plans that we've previously seen are very specific. They're almost like project management type documents. And what I would like us to see is a step backwards where we are looking at a much higher level and having a strategic plan that, you know, will guide us through specific circumstances without having those necessarily embedded in the plan itself.
Susan, do you have more comments than than Alana? And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Alana.
No, thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, you did not pronounce my name, thank you.
Oh, is it Alana?
Yeah, Alana Rhimes with Iguana, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding you, you're talking about a vision statement or a mission statement that establishes values that decisions can be weighed against going forward.
Yes, and that would be specifically a vision statement for service as opposed to, you know, I see the organization having its own separate, you know, vision statements.
And then is that, is that, does that have statutory or other legal authority? Or is it a policy document of the board?
It is of the board. So just like it would essentially be like any other municipality rule or policy that the select board or city council approved.
And then does it delegate authority to staff or does the board retain those decisions?
That will that will have to be determined through the process.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Andrea.
Yeah, I understand the reasons why a strategic plan is hard right now. I also think it's hard to articulate our values around service cuts without our values around service as a whole. And I wonder how we can broaden that out a little, maybe without a full strategic plan, but like, where do we provide service? Who do we want to make sure has service? You know, we've, we saw that happen a little bit with the Market Street service change. But I I want to make sure we're not, we're not sort of articulating our values around service cuts without without a slightly zoomed out conversation, so.
And so I think that I would, you know, emphasize that the name of the rule is not going to be service reductions. It's going to be service prioritization. And so, so it will. I don't imagine the rule would, you know, mention anything about specific routes, or it may lay a pathway for how reductions should be considered. But first and foremost, it has to let us know what the priorities are for the service that we have.
Okay, well, people are still pondering, what are our next steps as you see it, Clayton?
I think that the next steps, as I see it, is that if we use the leadership committee, what I would recommend is that we look in October, have the leadership committee meet twice on the 13th and the 27th. I am going to recommend that with this change and the breathing room, that perhaps the full board itself only needs to meet once in October. Partially, that's because I didn't realize in scheduling a meeting on the 14th that that's the same day as the CAPA conference. And I wanted to avoid the situation that we had last year where we had board members, you know, at the conference trying to participate in both things. So my recommendation is, is that we work on this through leadership. I can have a plan to leadership even advance of the 10-13 meeting. And then have the full board meet either on the 21st, which is our normally scheduled third Tuesday, or on the 28th. The other advantage to pushing that the days back is that we will have our assessment, municipal assessment reform discussions with municipalities on 10-15. And so especially if we were to make the monthly meeting on 10-28, we should have some good product from that available to share.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
So, thank you. In the read ahead, it described that this would continue the discussion from the leadership group. Is there anything that you want to share, but where the leadership committee has so far come with this? That's part one. And then I guess part two is what guidance are you looking for from the board today? Is it just for the leadership committee to continue? Or are you looking for some direction on this?
You know, I think that from my perspective, just want to continue to hear from the group that having the leadership committee take the lead on this makes sense. And I think that really, and I will let Amy jump in, but my perspective of the leadership committee's discussion is it really mirrored the discussion that we were just having about the situation that we're in, where we need to act. But, you know, but we have a little bit of time. And, and Amy, I'll stop putting words in your mouth and put the answer.
No, I think that's accurate, but that, but, you know, but that we can't having our values, our vision, you know, kind of flushed out means that we can make those decisions within a framework. And I think we had talked about this for the past year or so and not having that agreed upon vision for which to measure our actions makes it really, really hard to be consistent and thoughtful in our actions. So I think that this is the perfect time to kind of get that started. So there's nothing that we talked about at leadership that we haven't already talked about today. And that that strategic planning or, you know, the words we're using is everybody applies a little bit of a different meaning to the words that we're using. But but having those kind of values or that vision fleshed out means that we get to be a little bit more strategic in how we move forward. Does that answer your question, Paul?
Not really, because I'm not sure what you're asking. Today, we talked in this board meeting about like, what is it? But I don't know that I've heard much in the way of, are you looking for some guidance on it or are you just updating us?
I think the answer is not yet. I think the the discussion is we need to do it. And I think there's agreement as we've been talking that, that yes, that is important. We're going to kick it to leadership to get down into something specific. And then we'll be able to bring some of those specific ideas back to this bigger group to further discuss and hone and advise and shift. So I think this is the beginning of the kind of, here's a way that we can do it. Here's who's going to do it. And should we start getting it done? And so I think that's where we are.
That that makes sense to me. I mean, I'm perfectly fine to see a draft that the leadership committee does. I guess my thumb on the scale would be that, you know, we've just gone through some really important budget conversations and that that is front and center in such conversations. And building long-term resiliency, those are where I put my thumb on the scale. Thanks.
Heard, and thank you. Go ahead, Paul, and then Alana.
Just want to, a comment that I think use of outside committees is going to be very important for us, both to get their input, which will be great, but also for the, for to get feedback from them as we put this rule together. Certainly, we're in business to try to provide transportation to our community. So the more we can involve them in the process, I think that's going to be very beneficial to us.
Great. Alana, was that your hand? And did Paul just say what you were going to say?
I'm not sure. I'm just still trying to figure out what's going on. And so I'm sorry for being so confused here. So if I understand it correctly, the leadership team is going to put together a plan of how to to gather input into a potential vision and mission, and that will come back to the board. That not, like, we're okay, so like, it's not like we're getting, you're putting up a straw horse for us to look at. It's more like you're putting together a process to get to the vision. We're starting with a blank slate.
I think we're starting with a somewhat blank slate. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong as well, but leadership is going to take a first pass at drafting something and bringing it back. So not just the process, but moving a little bit further with leadership and then continually bringing it back to the bigger board for their guidance input. But that the detailed work isn't beginning here with this bigger group, that a smaller group will take a pass at it. We can bring it in, feedback from any stakeholder. And that, so a little bit more of the detail work will happen at leadership, and we'll keep bringing it back. Does that sound right, Clayton?
Absolutely. I think that the first thing I'll propose to the leadership group is here's the process by which we do the work. And then, once that's agreed upon, then we start doing the work. And then we then bring that to this group with updates as we, as we proceed. And really, the thinking today, getting to Paul's, Paul Connor's point, the only real decision point I need from you all today is whether you want to continue with the two meetings in October, which I think may be overkill at this point. And and if it is just the one meeting, whether it is the October 21st or 28th, but there's no real action item here. And really, this is just making sure that before I go charging too far down a path, that if there's anybody that's concerned in the direction that I'm going, that they can speak now and not, you know, later on in the process.
I think you and Amy certainly have enough information to decide whether to have one or two meetings in October. So I would leave it up to two of you.
Okay.
Tasha?
Thank, thank you so much. I guess I'm just curious, I like this idea of a rule and everything, but I just want to, I'm seeking a little more clarification about how we will approach this. Will we have a rule that has a variance process if the board decides that we've created this rule, but then other factors come into play? I want to just make sure that, that this is a, you know, a process that doesn't necessarily tie our hands.
Well, I mean, I would assume that absolutely that there would be, but that's that will be part of the drafting of the rule. And so just like some of the other rules that we worked through earlier in the year that the Governance Committee then, you know, brought to the board. You know, leadership will sort of oversee the drafting, will work with others in the drafting, will then, you know, endorse it. It will then come to here, and then folks will be able to weigh in on it. And, and so if I would have to imagine that the leadership committee would not want this to be a straitjacket type document. And so that there would be, you know, sort of that built into it.
I would think like any rule or any policy, the board can amend or change it as they wish. So I don't know, we could possibly tie our hands with a rule.
Great. Susan?
So if I'm understanding all of this, picking up on what Andrea, I think, was saying, I'm a little bit confused about how we develop a rule on prioritization without having the bigger vision for the organization established. So I don't want to prolong this conversation right now. Maybe that will be fleshed out more at the leadership meeting. But I am a little bit, it feels a little bit like putting the cart before the horse.
I would say, let's kick that conversation to leadership. Susan, I'm very glad that you're on leadership, that, that, that we, this is something that I know you've been talking about and makes a lot of sense. And I'm glad that you're there to help guide the conversation. I will also add that leadership, like all of our committee meetings are open, right? So as we're discussing this, none of you is excluded from joining in that conversation in that space. So please feel free, I listen to feedback, I listen to comments. All of it is welcome, and it's going to be a little muddy at first until we put something on paper. And it is always easier to edit something that is already down, make it bigger, smaller, broaden it. So once we start getting something down, we can say we need to go higher or lower or broader or narrower. So I think that leadership can start that process. And I would say, I love the idea of two leaderships and one board meeting. And I would advocate for the third, what is today, Tuesday of the month, like a normal board meeting, since I scheduled our Williston Sacred School Walk to School Day on the second Tuesday around this board meeting, and I can't, I can't be in both places. So that's my personal drama, but go ahead, Clayton, you were going to say something?
I'm going to say your personal drama is the chair gets to rule the day. So the board meeting will be 10-21. And we'll just have one for October, and I will go ahead and schedule the two leadership. I do want to follow up on something that Susan said. We do not have the privilege of moving forward when we want to move forward. We move forward based on the circumstances that we have. And so we were unable to develop a strategic plan for a variety of reasons. And simply not doing this rule because we don't have a guiding strategic plan is not an option. And so I think that we need to look past what our preferred way of operating will be to the reality of how the operating we are right now. And so we can go back to doing just a quick survey, where everybody puts their values in a survey, and we can move forward with that. Or we can do this process, which is much more inclusive, and we'll get feedback from other folks, including and most especially the leadership committee. So I, we can't keep looking at how we want to operate. We need to operate the way we can operate.
Okay. Fair enough. But I think that as much as we can in this process to have our cake and eat it too, I think it's what we should be able to, you know, what we should strive to, right? Our reality of now versus where we want to be and finding the balance of that. And I think that's what we'll strive to do. So I'm not seeing any other hands. And so I'm going to move us forward, because again, all related is an update on our Washington County transfer. Clayton, is Monica here? I didn't, I don't know.
Yes, she joined.
Yes. Welcome, Monica. Feel free to.
Great. Good morning. Good to see everybody. So there are two components that I was asked to provide an update for. So maybe I'll start with the update on seasonal service contributions. So just to level set, we were given a target by Vtrans of $150,000 of additional savings on the rural, on the rural side this year. And what we chose to do was to allocate that to the ski resorts that we serve. So both Vale for Stowe and Sugar Bush for our Mad River Valley service. Both of those services had not seen really substantial increases in requested contribution levels for quite some time. And doing an analysis at looking at what other sister transit agencies receive from contributions percentage wise from the ski resorts that they serve. So there's Mount Snow, Stratton, Okemo, and I think Killington are the ones that come to mind. We were way under benchmark for what the receipts were for contributions there. So, so for this year, we went out to Vale with a request for an additional 100,000 and to Sugar Bush for an additional 50,000 to allocate that $150,000 target to for the ski resorts as opposed to looking at any service reductions on the rural side. I'm pleased to report that both of those, both of the resorts have agreed to those additional contribution amounts. So again, that's 100,000 for Vale and 50,000 for Sugar Bush. Very appreciative to them for helping us to meet those targets without any impacts to kind of our baseline service levels. Um, very appreciative, uh, to them for helping us to meet those targets without, um, any impacts to, um, kind of our baseline service levels. Um, and so I guess I'll stop there. If there's any, Clayton, if you want to jump in to add anything, um, on that front, or if there are any questions out there.
I definitely want to jump in because I want to make sure that everybody knows what a great job, uh, Monica did as our lead and then our support staff with Nick and Chris, um, all contributing to provide her the information, um, necessary. Uh, it thrills me that, uh, we're able to have our entire rural, uh, savings target, uh, met through uh, this service and that we are not looking at, um, you know, reducing, uh, you know, service and Franklin and, uh, county or in our, our sort of core of Washington County. So, so great, uh, work with that. Uh, Monica, and it was really also a great opportunity, uh, to work with Tri Valley Transit, um, knowing that uh, that they would be, uh, the negotiation with, uh, Sugar Bush took a little bit longer. And, uh, because this is service that we would be transferring to Tri Valley Transit, we wanted to make sure that we were on the same page with them. Um, and it was great working with, uh, with Jim and his crew on that. So, so great work, Monica.
Thank you. Um, and so that's a, a great segue to the second topic, um, related to the transfer. So, um, it, that is going right along down the tracks and I will maybe say, uh, kind of start off the, with, um, when the initial news was received, I think it was with, I, I think it's fair to say, um, some level of trepidation, um, from the team here of, because it was, um, I think maybe a year's worth of maybe, yes, we don't know. Is it going to go forward? Is it not going to go forward? Um, and having an answer was, um, good to kind of get out of that space of uncertainty. Uh, but then there was like, okay, immediately what, what's going to happen? So now that it's been decided that we're no longer going to be part of GMT and we're moving to Tri Valley Transit, what does that mean? Um, and I really think that, um, it has been success, we have successfully um, been able to kind of turn that trepidation into, uh, a level of excitement, if I can even say that. I think that um, working with Jim, um, who's really, uh, I have to say he's very, a, a very, um, thoughtful leader and very deliberate and, um, very open and transparent. Um, and so that, which is really kind of necessary ingredients for success. And so, um, when the decision was made, uh, communications immediately about like trying to hit some of the, well, what does this mean? What are we looking at for the future, um, questions? Um, Jim has been here multiple times, um, as well as some of the leadership team. Um, I've been to Middlebury. I have not yet been to the, um, other TBT locations. Um, but we're working on kind of getting those, um, relationship building and, and site visits kind of across the board, folks coming here, us going at there. Um, and it's, um, it, it, it's exciting. I think we're, we're in a good, in a good place. Um, last week, we, uh, there was a meeting with, um, the TBT board, or at least a subset of the board that's been focusing on the Washington County, um, tri- potential transfer from, from the beginning up until this point. Um, and so it was that, with that TBT subcommittee um, with, uh, Clayton, myself, uh, I can't remember who else, uh, several others of the directors, um, from GMT. Uh, Christian Meyer was there, uh, and V-Trans was there, um, along with Stephen Fabel. And, um, it was just, it was really, really great to hear again, the commitment from the Tri Valley Transit Board to first and foremost, take care of the, take care of the, the Washington County people in this transfer. Um, and to do so mindfully with intention, um, toward the Tri Valley Transit values of, um, really equity across the board for the entire TBT family. Um, and so I think, um, you know, we definitely have a lot of work ahead of us in the next nine months-ish, um, before the target date of July first. But, um, I'm, I think there's a, a, a note of, um, excitement and, um, I, I, yeah, I, I think that's just how I, I would phrase it in general. I might ask, um, you know, Christian, because you've been looped in from, um, TBT, uh, toward the, the TBT board, and I don't know if you've got any observations, um, based on the, the, um, engagement that you've had so far.
That's, thank you, Monica. I think that was a really good description of where we are and, and the kind of relationships that I think are moving to make this transition, at least, uh, at this point, very successful. The meeting last week was definitely left me optimistic. Um, I don't have a lot to add, just to say that the, I think the expression came up, we, we, we have a needle to thread, but we seem to have a path to thread it. Um, so that kind of, I, I just stay diligent, keep working, and I have no reason to believe that we can't find a, uh, successful outcome.
Thank you. So, yeah, I don't know if I have anything else to add. Clayton, if you want to flush it out any further, or if there are questions.
Uh, you know, one of the things, uh, and just how this is impacting, uh, me personally, I'll share a little bit. It is so helpful, um, having this turn because going to Berlin and hearing from people like, hey, please stop this transfer. Hey, this is, you know, I'm scared about this. I mean, that was, has been very hard to hear for the past year. And, uh, and so seeing the excitement that's happening now, seeing that people are enthusiastic about the change, um, really has just been, you know, helping, you know, my sleep at night, and I appreciate Monica, um, and Christian, the, the work that you all have been doing positively that's been helped, uh, to sort of turn that, uh, turn that tide. So thank you so much. Oh, and I should also mention, we should say thank you to Dan, too.
This is, uh, nice, positive, optimistic news, and I really appreciate it. Um, and so thank you to all for being involved, and I, I certainly think the unknown is su- super hard and getting down to doing business is always a little bit more clear, obviously. So thank you, and this is good news. Um, if there's no further questions or comments other than keep moving forward, uh, we can talk about, uh, Franklin County, Franklin, Grand Isle and Lemoyal County.
And so I'll be taking, uh, the lead there and, and, you know, one of the reasons why I'm sort of focusing on Franklin County is because um, I think that, uh, as hopefully Bob feels this way too, that, uh, you know, Grand Isle is, is still going to be excellently served by cider and, uh, cider will be receiving support from RCT moving forward instead of GMT, but I think that, uh, um, you know, probably, uh, the, the people on the ground and, and Grand Isle are are, uh, not going to notice too much of, of the change moving forward because they'll still be getting service from the same great people and organization. Um, similarly with, uh, with our Lemoyal service, we're going to be doing the, the next year's, uh, seasonal um, and stow, and so that change will be, uh, happening, um, a little bit further on. And, um, and so really the focus has been on, uh, on RCT's, uh, work and, uh, Franklin County is, is our original sort of focus. We had another one of our transfer meetings yesterday. It, uh, um, I think that sort of similar to the, the collaborative positive way it was described for um, TBT's transfer meeting, I think that that was very similar for, for our group. Um, one of the things that's become really clear to me is that, uh, Caleb, uh, the, uh, executive director for RCT is a really great person for process and, uh, um, and you can see the work that he and his organization has done and sort of mapping out all of the tasks that need to happen. Um, one of the things that, uh, that we discussed yesterday that was very pleasing to me was that, um, you know, hearing that, uh, that RCT is going to be, um, wrapping up some of its, uh, benefits, uh, that it will be offering to our staff and being able to issue offer letters to them. There's an intention, uh, for RCT to have, uh, the, their staff that are operating out of the Franklin location be, um, sort of a separate business unit, um, as their other staff. So sort of similar to the way uh, we have an urban and rural, uh, here within GMT, um, they're going to have, um, a separation with RCT and, and what that means is, is that they're intending, um, to essentially match uh, our pay and benefits, uh, for the, for the staff that are going to be, uh, working there, which I think is definitely been a concern, uh, that, that we've had. Um, one of the things that does simplify things, uh, for the transfer to RCT is that there's not a contract to negotiate in advance, um, since RCT is not a union provider. Um, if they were to, um, uh, become unionized after the transfer, that would happen um, post-transfer. And, and so what that means is that a lot of the work that TVT will be doing in the coming months to sort of, uh, merge contracts is something that RCT will not need to do. That gives them the ability to act, um, uh, with an accelerated, uh, vision, which I'm very happy to report. Um, one of the things that we are looking at, um, especially as we've struggled with our own, um, work in the call centers, is that um, they are moving towards a plan where they will start taking over the call center service uh, for Franklin County as soon as November first. Um, and, uh, I think that this will be, um, a, a great introduction for the staff to see sort of the, the RCT way and, um, you know, to gain confidence and, and the quality work that RCT is doing. Um, and there is discussion about potentially even having the transfer, um, instead of being July first, uh, being January first. Um, one of the things that would, that would vastly simplify how we handle some of the benefit considerations, especially since um, things like health insurance plans and section one twenty five, um, health insurance savings um, are done on a calendar year. And so if, uh, if there is a pathway where we can provide the seamless um, transition so that, uh, all of our riders and communities get the, the service that they need, uh, we may see that happen earlier than later. I think that we've all come to the conclusion that simply waiting, um, you know, is, is, is not helpful for, for anybody involved. And, uh, and so I think that, uh, uh, things are going along, um, very well there. I also want to, uh, give, um, appreciation to V-Trans. Um, V-Trans and managing, uh, the state's fleet assets, um, was able to identify, um, where there would be uh, vehicles that another provider in the south would not need, um, that then could be used for RCT for the Stowe Mountain Service. Um, this is important to us because that means that, um, there's a much better likelihood that, uh, uh, the buses that we currently use for stow service would be able to be retained, uh, in our urban fleet, uh, which will definitely, um, you know, uh, relieve some pressure on our, on our vehicles. So things are, are moving along very positively. Um, I think that getting, um, uh, once the employees sort of get their offer letters and, and see that they are going to be, um, you know, whole, uh, through the process, uh, that we'll, uh, we'll see very similar, um, you know, changes and and, and how this is being viewed at the, at the local level. And I do, uh, um, Catherine, um, Bob and Tasha have been, um, attending those meetings and, uh, and if and, and if they would like to provide any, um, additional, uh, thoughts, uh, would, would love to hear their perspectives.
I think, uh, maybe just to update Clayton on the decisions about the Alberg and Richford commuter routes and the link services. Um, and before you do that, I would just like to say that one of, one of my huge concerns, as you know, because I express it often, was um, what would happen to our staff in this transfer? And so it's really encouraging to see such forward progress on that question in both Central Vermont and Franklin Grand Isle.
Uh, uh, happy to, uh, sorry for forgetting to include that. Um, part of the originals, uh, transfer plans that, uh, um, that Stephen Fabel, uh, outlined, which, you know, and these were just very broad-stalked plans, um, included that GMT Urban would continue to operate, uh, the service from Alberg and, uh, Richford, uh, into Burlington. And one of the things that, uh, we've worked out with RCT is that um, our link service, uh, will connect to St. Albans and then they will be, um, uh, operating the commuter service, uh, there from Alberg and Richford to, to St. Albans. And so one of the things that, um, uh, I think is going to be good for us with this is that, you know, perceptions really matter and, uh, and we've heard some feedback from uh, legislators who are concerned about having our large, um, uh, urban buses, you know, used in rural to transport uh, small numbers of people. And so having, um, uh, having this arrangement with RCT will help ensure that those folks in those communities, uh, retain their commuter service, um, in a way that I think will be the, the most economically efficient.
Bob or Tasha, did you have anything else? Tasha, you just came off mute.
Yeah, thanks. Amy, you know my emotions well now. Um, yeah, no, I just want to say one of the things that we, I think we've all really appreciated, it, it, it is how well Clayton and Caleb Grant are working together to make this happen. And I think that really, um, at least for our region, feels like a very positive, um, and, and helpful development and all of this. So thank you.
And I, I would be remiss if I did not follow on that really it's John Moore and Caleb that are doing the daily work, uh, on this. Um, as folks know, John has been focused on our, uh, rural service, um, uh, this past year. And, uh, he and Caleb have been doing, uh, uh, doing great work.
Thanks. Uh, go ahead, Bob, uh, Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted to give kudos to Monica and her, her crew, all of her staff. Raising a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not an easy task, but it must mean that they've given great service to both Sugar Bush and Stowe, or they would not have acquiesced so quickly and come up with that kind of money. So congratulations, Monica, and your crew.
Thank you. I, if I can just jump in there and say that I'm extraordinarily proud of the, uh, quality of service that's provided, um, for our seasonal service. And it really speaks to, um, the strength of the, um, our primary, uh, seasonal supervisor who's led the program for um, so the past several years, as well as the, the work that we've done to, um, strengthen and improve year over year. Um, so yes, thank you for, um, noticing, uh, and observing that. Much appreciated.
Thank you. I love all the congratulations and all the progress. It's really, um, uplifting. Go ahead, Jepa.
Right. Uh, just a brief history lesson for folks, uh, if you'd indulge me, and, and I think GMT really, uh, has excelled here in playing a pivotal role, uh, decades ago when the wheels and the network were struggling as transit providers outside of Chittenden County. Uh, GMT really stepped in, then CCTA to kind of help develop a regional transit network and help facilitate the Link Expresses, continue to support transit in, uh, communities around Northwest Vermont and Central Vermont. And we've worked really hard to balance both the urban and rural because that was the need at the time and, and V-Trans asked us to step up and fill that role. I'm really proud of the work we've done and I'm really proud of the cooperative work GMT has done with our partners now that V-Trans and others are, are seeing stronger, uh, transit partners outside of, uh, Chittenden County, which is great. And I think we are playing an appropriate role here in kind of helping reshape transit in the area. And I'm hopeful through this process that, um, our state partners, not just V-Trans, but the legislature sees this kind of cooperative approach and win-win effort here as really a testament to the hard work we're all doing and hope that it buys some goodwill to make sure that, you know, all parties land well through this process. Uh, I think we've heard a lot of goodwill here today and a lot of forward momentum. And the devil's going to be in the details and we need, uh, positive landings for, for all entities. And I, I hope that message, uh, can be heard loud and clear, uh, by others and, uh, look forward to uh, making that happen, uh, with our partners across the board. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you all. And thanks to the GMT, um, staff and partners for moving us forward and for all the, um, board members who are joining in and helping to lead those conversations and those transitions. I appreciate it. I'm going to move us forward, um, to, um, oh goodness, we're already at the general manager report. Clayton, look at us speeding along and having good conversations. That's all, Jerry.
It is. And I'm glad that we don't have to, you know, hey, you've got three minutes and I need an action item. Come on, quick, you know? So, much of what I'm working on is what we've been talking about. And so I do want to, for my general managers' report, kind of come across, uh, a few things, um, that we haven't spent much time on today. Um, first, I want to give, uh, a correction to my trip report, uh, last, uh, or that I sent out after going to St. Cloud. And that was that I had mistakenly believed that the obligated funds that we had for purchasing our next round of electric buses was going to be just for the next round of purchases and was very happy to know that we have the obligations for the next two rounds. And so that means that our next order of six electric buses won't be our last. We will be getting a next or another round after that. So very happy that we have more electric buses on its way than I had originally thought. I do want to touch a little bit on the assessment reform and and our continued work with Reframe Lab and AECOM. Chris and I met with them last week and after they have completed their all of their local interviews. And so for those board members and those local municipal folks that were interviewed as part of this process, thank you very much for doing that. And and I think that what they have found sort of matches what they presented to us earlier. You know, this desire for greater transparency, a more understandable process. And and I think that we are going to be able to see positive movement in that direction. The they are planning to convene all of the municipal city and town managers on October 15th. And Chapin, I'll need to sort of work with you on who the appropriate folks with BTV would be for that. And and so that's where we're going to sort of go through everything that was heard, kind of lay out some thoughts to them to get, you know, feedback from the group. And and that, I think, will be sort of the final thing that they do before they start preparing some recommendations for us that we'll get either later in October or early November. One of the things that I want to pass on is that we generally do a lot of, you know, some of our work is kind of dismal, you know, talking about financial projections and how we're going to squeeze, you know, service, you know, as much service as we can out of limited funds. But there has been an opportunity that that has come up that that I'm excited about. And that is that the U.S. State Department has a program where folks who are young professionals will do an exchange within the U.S. And so we will be having a person who works in Jakarta, Indonesia, come to us. They have a background in a master's degree in planning and a background in in planning work. And they are really interested in sort of studying the electrification process of transferring from from diesel to electric fleets. And so they're going to spend four weeks with us. We are going to get their help in sort of taking some of the real world data that we have now on our most recent electric bus purchases and and comparing them to comparable buses. And one of the things that's nice is that at about the same time, receive we received new new flyer buses in both the electric battery and in the diesel drivetrain formats, which means that we have a great comparable because the buses are nearly identical except for the drivetrain. And it's really going to be able to provide us with a more holistic perspective on on the the difference in costs between electric and diesel. And so that would be a good project from them to to work on. I'm sure that they'll be attending one of the the board meetings that we have. And we'll also be taking them around to to meet with our partners. One of the things that may come of this is that during their stay here, we will develop a reciprocal exchange, which would be potentially having some GMT staff go to Jakarta. This is, again, paid for by the State Department. So it's certainly not something that I would ask us to, you know, the local folks to to shoulder the cost of a trip like this and during a time of constriction. So I just want to emphasize that if we are selected to do that, that the that it would be paid for by the federal government. And so I think that that potentially gives the the opportunity for some of our staff to to sort of go on a once in a lifetime, you know, trip to the other side of the world and and see how public transit and in one of the world's largest cities operates. The one of the things that you may have noticed is that sitting in our boardroom is Nate Bergeron, our chief steward. And he'll probably have to say something in order for the camera to focus on him. But so so Nick, is he still there?
Sorry, Clayton. We were chatting real quickly about electric buses. So I have to reiterate the question. Sorry.
Okay. Oh, no, no, I just Nate, are you still in the boardroom? If you say something.
Yeah, I'm still here. I'm still here, Clayton.
Okay. And then the owl, come on, owl, show Nate. All right.
It it works when it wants to. It's kind of temperamental. Trust me on here.
There you go. And so one of the things that I'm really happy about our new collective bargaining agreement is that Nate will be joining us for our board meetings. So make sure that the that our teamsters stay completely up to date with how things are going with GMT. And here's the same information that we provide to our board to make sure that we're all on the same page. I expect that we'll have his first sort of update to the board because he'll provide quarterly updates at our September 30th meeting. And so you'll be able to hear from him there.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Nate. And and so those are the the items that that I wanted to present to you all and wanted to give time for questions because I'm sure that there are projects that I'm working on with some of you that that I have probably not moved as fast as as everyone, including myself, would like. And so please, if there's anything that you'd like to query me about, let me know now.
Anyone? All right.
I will just enclose before I turn things over. The we do a GMT update to all of the legislators, both rural and urban, that are in our service area and to our urban municipal partners. I copy you on that. And that sort of provides the the news of the the ongoing news. And one of the things that I've received some responses from folks is that they generally don't participate in the call because they feel that the, you know, that the email news, you know, gives them everything that they need. But you can continue to expect to see those as we go through the next. I would say I'd probably continue those at least until the beginning of the legislative session before talking with legislators about how to do that while they're in session. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have to say, I have not been able to attend those, but I really appreciate the relationship building and the ongoing conversation with municipal partners and legislators. I think sometimes lack of transparency, lack of transparency is really lack of communication, right? So as the more we communicate, the more we understand how we get to where we are and what goes into it. So I just really appreciate that effort.
And one of the things that I have to, you know, give credit to, Representative Matt Walker, who is the chair of the Transportation Committee, has attended all of those updates but one. He's been fully engaged, and I think that it's really been a great opportunity for us, you know, to establish positive rapport with him. And so I appreciate his his efforts and his and his role as Transportation Committee Chair.
Thanks. Moving along to our board committee reports. We've just down to kind of two regularly meeting committees at the moment. And leadership, you all heard most of what we talked about at leadership. The only other thing that we did was receive a presentation or a conversation led by the McCrassan Group looking at kind of legislative options as far as funding structures. Wasn't a terribly rosy conversation in that, you know, the the things that are occupying the legislature right now include housing and education. And although transit is tied up in those intensely, I think the conversation really is to help, you know, with the the process to help the legislature understand how transit, public transit is is really connected to those things because that's where they're focusing their as their effort. But it wasn't like, here's our absolute, you know, path to to changing anything. So did I characterize that pretty well, Clayton?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's there's not going to be bags of cash sitting around the legislature to easily grab the session.
Big sigh. Okay, so that's leadership. Paul, did finance talk about things that we haven't yet talked about?
They did, Amy. Nick gave us a report on the unaudited final operations for FY '25. And they're very, very rosy. We we ended up with a with a very good outcome for FY '25. The audit is is ongoing. And as a board, we'll get the final audit actually in February, but I'm sure Nick will give us an update between now and then.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions about those reports and or any general commissioner comments? Seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn or second, whichever you'd like.
I think Chapin and Paul got the first and second in whatever order the note taker decides. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Wonderful. Thank you all for your brains, your ideas, your questions. It's nice to see all of you. And we will go back to the third Tuesday in October for our next meeting. And we'll delete those other two meetings. Thank you all.
We're still meeting September 30th.
We are still meeting September 30. I thank you for that reminder. Don't delete that one.
Yeah, just 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 the one meeting in October instead of the two meetings in October.
Right. And we could probably just wait for Jamie to send out the the don't delete anything till Jamie sends it. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. Good job, John Moore.
Thank you, everyone. Bye bye.